We welcome everyone here and everyone at home. We will open the work session agenda, May 8th, 2024, at 1:02 PM. Item for discussion, budget fiscal year ending June 2025. Mayor Tom, I mean mayor. Oh, did I say that? City manager, Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. Board, appreciate y'all carving out this time during, during your day. And we've got so much going on and I'm just glad we found this time. Also want to thank department heads and everybody that, that put a lot of time and work into this budget. Also wanted to start off by saying, Richard Ross is keeping an eye on the weather. If we have a tornado warning, we will go downstairs. But hopefully that will not happen. I think most of the models say 5 o'clock or later. But we'll just keep an eye on that. I sent out a packet, which for somebody that looks at the numbers daily, it makes sense to me. When I basically what this, this work session is to answer any questions. If you have any, any questions on the numbers or questions on mythology, or any kind of thinking behind what we're trying to do primarily. You know, when I ask, and this has been an ongoing process. Last year's budget was, was very aggressive. This year continues to be aggressive, not as aggressive as last year. But the things that, that, you know, as we try to build towards a future and the growth, you know, we're, revenue is the driving force, you know? And we, we want to do what we can to get ready based on the revenue. I thought a few revenues would be further along than they are, primarily building permits, but it's, it's, it's coming. So, but I, I just, we're excited about the future of Fairview, but we want to also be very, very strategic in how we provide service. And one of the, two of the things that staff told me is what, what, you know, is what do you need in your departments? Everybody said staffing issues, you know? And then right behind that is facilities. So we aggressively went after staffing with 11 new positions. Six of those in public safety. That pretty much gets them complete until we, we have new facilities. But that, we're having issues and I'll let, I'll let chief explain more. But we're, anytime there's, there's vacation, sickness, injury, we're having trouble supplying the correct amount of people on the road. So we want to, in, in case there is, somebody has to be out, we still want to be able to provide adequate service. Also on planning codes, we're in the, within the first year of rebuilding that entire department. We need staff. We're, we've got a couple of positions in there. And then parks, we're rebuilding, parks and public works, we're rebuilding from decreases in the past. Just trying to get up where adequate to provide service. We, we, we cut a few things because the revenues weren't, as I stated earlier, weren't quite where I thought they would be. But we were requesting a 1% cost of living increase. In operating, we did make almost a 5% decrease in expenditures and in capitals, a 46% decrease in expenditures. Our bond and ARP expenditures should ramp up significantly. I never thought it would take this long to spend some money. But everybody, and we have to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is between engineering, T dot, and every other organization has to put their stamp on, on our projects. Hopefully that is going to increase even, even at the end of this fiscal year. So what we're proposing is 11,142,200 dollars in revenue. That's all funds, general fund, street aid and drug fund. 11 million, 503, 573 in expenditures. Now, this is taking out bond ARP because they don't, they don't really affect our operating budget and capital. It comes out of operating, but they can be postponed or delayed. They're not going to really affect our operating. So that, that puts us at 11 million, 503, 573, which is a deficit of 361, 373, which I feel very comfortable with. Last year, we were, we were, we were, had a negative at 732 and we're probably going to come in right around a positive 400. So, you know, we, we, we do revenue very conservatively. So I'm very comfortable with this budget. We can go through this line item by line item however you want to, or we can just ask questions. I've got most of the department heads here, but just going to kind of let it be however y'all want it to be. But I'll open, open the floor for questions, or we can go about it, just go through the line item by line item, whatever y'all'd rather do.
I think it would be a good idea to, you know, just kind of go through it because, you know, we've got it televised and everything. Maybe not like, but I know there's, the board can weigh in on this, but I don't know, you know, like things that are.
Broke one of my rules.
Okay, well, we'll.
I don't mean like every, I mean, there's, you know, I would touch on each, what do y'all think? Like each main point.
Yeah, anything that changed, I think should at least be spoken to as to why it changed, either up or down. For me personally, it's the first time really going through it. I mean, the last time, when I first got on board, we touched on the budget briefly, but this is the first time for an annual one. I have a lot of questions just because I am ignorant to a lot of it. So forgive me if I ask any questions that are unnecessary.
No, no, that's fine. I'll, I'll just kind of go through it, how it is, how it is laid out, how it makes sense to me. If you look on the revenue page, anything that has 110 is operating account revenue. It is unrestricted revenue, which means we can, we can apply that however the board sees fit. As far as this year, we're proposing 9,877,200 dollars there. Now, that does not include grants and other, other revenue that is maybe committed or restricted, but kind of shows up in the, in the operating. Like THSO grants, the TML safety grants, Governor Violent Crime Grant. All those are, yes, they're show up in operating, but they are committed to pay for certain things. Any questions on that?
I've had a question from some citizens about the LISO. Is that, is that something that the, the community can bid on, or how does that work?
The LISO program, for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's military surplus. It's when the military gets done with it and it's available to police agencies. We saw that several years ago when we were having some, some, you know, just financial struggles here in the city as a revenue line for us. So we get very aggressive in that program and were able to acquire multiple pieces of equipment that the city uses daily and equipment that we've sold. Once we get it, we keep it on hand for one year and then it's, it's available to sell. We don't get anything on that system that is protected items like armored vehicles and stuff like that, which a lot of agencies do. They just try to reach out for those things like that they want. For us, it's a revenue line. So we get bulldozers and BICOs and, and stuff like that, you know, and we sell those. And when, when you see those things come through that are a spreadsheet that's surplusing those items, that means they have run their course of one year and we have decided to, to sell those. And when we do that, we do that 100% on gov deals. With all surplus to the city, when you go to sell it, it has to be made available to the public and everybody has a right to that and we post everything on gov deals. I think this year to date on this budget cycle, we're, we're on 70,000, 70, 80,000 in revenue on that. And that's been pretty consistent. We've bought multiple patrol cars out of that, you know, out of that fund. I've turned that back into the general fund to pay for patrol cars. And then we utilize a lot of the equipment here at the city still that we, we decided to retain. Otherwise, we would, would have to go out and buy and purchase.
So is it a like govdeals dot?
I think it's dot com, it's govdeals. Yeah, govdeals is a large government auction site. We, we participate in that. The user that, that buys something on that, they pay the fee to govdeals. It doesn't come out of our money at all. Our rate is what it is and they pay those surcharges to govdeals. And then, you know, once that, that process goes through, they come here and acquire it from us, pick it up.
I think, you know, kind of what, what the people who reached out to me were wondering is if, you know, I think we had talked about LISO one night at, at a board meeting and they were just wondering if, you know, say there were cars or jewelry or something like that, that is, you know, on this site for them to bid on.
You'll see a ton of sites, of, of agencies across the nation that subscribe to that. So there'll be items of all types on that site. It's not just specific to us. It won't go and just have Fairview PD. It'll be, if you search for a box truck, it'll be box trucks from all over the US that agencies, that some government agency has decided to sell. You will find things on that site like that that are often from drug seizures and things from agencies that do that. But our primary focus is LISO equipment, which is often heavy equipment type things that we know we can sell and get quite a bit of profit off those. Usually if we have to travel any distance, we might have $2,000 in the trip to go get something and we'll turn and sell it a year later for $28,000. So we think that's a good deal and we'd do that every day, you know, that we could.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
For just a little more clarification, every fixed asset that, that is like an automobile or something, we go through the govdeals process. So it, it's not just LISO, but it's, it's other assets as well.
Tom, the 4th, the July 4th donations has increased pretty significantly. And I was just curious if there was explanation, just your reasoning behind it? Or the, the cost of the 4th of July event has gone up significantly too. So I didn't know if there was updates to that event or changes that made the change, the cost change? Or any information you can provide?
Yes, and Richard's here too, if he wants to speak any on this, but we have.
Let me, let me mention something real quick. If we're gonna, it, it would help everybody to just say what page.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on the, yeah, that first page here.
But I'm just, just moving forward, just what page you're on so that everybody can kind of turn to that page.
Yeah, this is in the operating account revenue unrestricted, about the bottom quarter. It's a.
Okay, yeah, 4th.
July 4th donations.
34751, okay.
It was 20,000 last year, it shows 35 this year, so I was just curious.
Yes, we were under a little bit last year, but we, we do expect to have quite a few more sponsors and contributors to that. A good thing about what we try to do on our events is have it fully, or as close as we can, funded by sponsorships, donations, et cetera, where we know it's, it's community supported. And, and I have a hard time when somebody asks me if, you know, why my pothole patched and we're out here shooting fireworks off with tax dollars. And I, we, we try not to use tax dollars as much as possible on all our events.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one question on that same page. It's 33, 570, the sports betting fund. How long have we been getting that?
That's pretty new. It came, it started coming in a little bit the prior fiscal year. This is, this is going to be upcoming, whether fiscal year or now. This next upcoming year will be the first year we have it all 12 months.
And I'm assuming that comes from the state, right?
Yes, we've got that one and we've also got a new one right up above it. This transportation modernization that I'm not real, I've just got one payment on it and it was very small. So I, I went very, very conservative on it. And then we also, another, all, a lot of the, of the, they also collect some of the, we also get a share of other folks. Had a, had a little lapse there. The motel hotel tax, we also are getting a share from state revenue on that as well. And so those are the three smaller changes in, in state shared taxes.
Thank you, Tom.
On the first page on the summary, can you help me, if I'm so again? So last year, we, we, our budget showed a deficit of 730, but we are in a positive almost 400. So help me wrap my head around, is that increased revenues? Is that unspent capital? Is that, like, how do we?
It's, it's a little bit of everything. It's unspent, un, it's revenue that we didn't count on as well as coming in under budget. The thing about the expenditure budgets, it's 99% of the time going, is, is you're going to come in under that. You know, if you put, just for example, and I adjusted it some in amended budget this year, but like say if you have in the budget a new position, well, if you hire them in in September, you know, you, you, there's two months that you don't have salaries or income tax or benefits. So there's other areas that just most of our, I mean, I'd say most. All of our department heads are very conscientious of what they're spending and, and keep it under budget. I've not had any issues with having to go and say, hey, what's this? Is that answer?
No, it's good, it's a good thing. I'm just trying to, you gotta talk to me like I'm, it's first grade math.
No, no, it's, and it's not an exact science. You know, you, you talk to everybody you can talk to, to try to get a good number. And the main, that's why I like using what we've seen. And I know, like I said, I know building permit revenue is fixing to just jump, but I can't show it.
No, that's right.
So, you know, so that's, that's been my thing is, is I think one of the way, we've got this cushion in between our budget and our operating, in between about, about 2 and a half, 3 million dollars. And I, I want to keep that there as a buffer and, and as we go and we have projects where we might want a grant and we have to put some money up and then get reimbursed. We've got that, we've got the cash flow to support that. And it's, to me, it's just good, good sense. It's not anything that we're trying to hoard. It's, we're trying to take advantage of opportunities down the road. And if, usually it's only an opportunity if you can afford it.
And so along those lines, the property taxes number and sales, county sales tax number that we have from 23, 24, those are realized or we're on track to hit those numbers? Or that we hire, are the revenues higher?
I'm anticipating the revenues to be higher in those.
So we're still very conservative on your projections for this budget? Because if we're matching those and we're already going to be higher, then our revenues are, should be very conservative.
Got another question, Mayor, if you don't mind. Vice Mayor mentioned something that put my memory force into action. I noticed that we, you know, had our share of the, the sales tax and we're still holding on to that. And I know the county tried to jump in and try to take a big portion of that and we're still holding on to our share of the sales tax increase. I think it was the quarter percent or something.
I believe, are you talking about when they, they wanted to use that for school facilities?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe, I believe everything is back to normal. I think they used a lot of that money to pay off school debt in the county. As far as ours, we're still getting the same rate we always did, but we're not getting the school facilities money. It's still going to the county and I'll have to look how many more years, but I think we've got at least four more years to do that. And then, well, I have to talk to them. I tell you, that, that money about drove me crazy because you couldn't do anything with it and it, it just sit there and it was just, it didn't make any sense for me to have money that I couldn't spend. So anyway, I'm fine with them having it.
I remember those days. Okay, thank you.
While we're on this, back on this front page here, and Tom, you might get into this when we get into the capital expenditure page. Just to jump off that 46% reduction is a large drop. And I didn't know if there was, I would imagine there's a handful of bigger ticket items that caused that to change.
Okay, we're in expenditures.
Capital, well, just on your front page, your, your high, I mean, you can wait. We can touch on this when we get to capital if you feel that's better.
It might be better. It's probably spread across several departments. We had, I did not, this is operating capital, not bond and ARP. So we did drop a lot of the money coming out of the operating funds. Now, we still have some capital coming out of other areas, but we, it's in the operating portion. And I'll, as we go through it, I'll, I'll point those out.
Perfect, thank you.
Before we go too far, can you introduce the man with no beard next to you?
Yeah. I told Ben, since he was here, I was going to go on home. I had some things to do, but Ben, Ben has sat in with, this is Ben Knox.
I'm just messing since you shaved your teeth, right?
I've taken you very literal. He's, he's sitting in with, on our, on our budget meetings with, with the departments and, and has gone through a lot of this with me. And as we go through, hopefully one day he'll, he'll take over the reins. But I'm, I'm real excited about Ben being on board. He's, he's come a long way in a year.
Just for discussion, I asked the question, is this like the second or third year that our sales tax has been higher than our property tax revenue? So we've always.
I believe it's the third.
Third year. So we've always been so dependent on property tax. It's pretty huge that our sales tax revenue has now surpassed that. And I think it's great for our budget revenue.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, it's a great, great sign.
If you go past the operating revenue, the parks, you see I put in 35,000 for park building permit fees. I think that's super conservative, but well, that's a starting point. Treebank, I've not put any in. This year, we've taken in over $400,000, which was not in the budget. It, you know, I, I can't really, if I don't know what's coming, I'm just going to put a zero. And when it comes, it comes. Then the facilities tax is down there. Like I said, I expect these to jump, but it's where it is right now. And that's all general fund revenue. So you go down, that's 10,794,075, which is 436, 533 over last year. And then we go down to street aid and staying neutral. It hadn't really changed a lot in, in the last two or three years. And then drug fund, we still don't get a lot of revenue. It's picking up a little bit, but most of our drug fund revenue comes, but comes in through the state. And so we'll just kind of watch that. We're, we're keeping expenditures very low in the drug fund and trying to build that up just a little bit.
So what is the difference in the county sales tax number and the state sales tax number? As far as percentage?
I should have brought my calculator in here. I'm, I'm going to put it on a, you see, you got a, it's probably, local option is probably three times the state shared. So you got 3.5 million in local option. That is the, the sales tax that comes through our tils. That's generated right here in the city of Fairview. And then the other is state, state sales tax, that's state shared revenue from the whole state's sales, sales tax revenue.
And that's purchasing, from purchasing?
And the, the state shared is on per capita. So, and then, but the, the local, the county sales tax, up here it says county sales tax. I really should have changed that. It's really local, it's Fairview sales tax, but the county gives it, it goes to the state, back to the county, then back to us. And ha- half of, anyway, half of all of our sales tax goes to the Williams County schools. And then this is our half.
Okay, and it's, it, it's basic, the county sales tax is basically our local, our local sales tax, okay? And half goes to schools and half goes to us?
And this is our half.
Okay.
Just so I'm following, making sure I'm following along correctly. Are you, so you're saying that the city of Fairview generates $7 million in sales tax revenue a year? Half of it comes to us, half of it goes to county?
Um, yes. Took my minute, sorry.
That's pretty incredible, isn't it?
Thereabouts.
Although it just raises a new set of questions, but that's for another day.
I get a report every month of anybody. I, I didn't think anybody liked looking at these things, but maybe I have, I know what every city in the county brings in on a local optional sales, sales tax every month. And you, we are on the bottom.
We continue to trend upwards, I suppose?
As does everyone else.
Fair enough.
I will say it's nice to see a revenue line item on the parks section though. To have money generating out of that fund is good.
Yes, yes, I, I think that was a good, good decision on the board. As far as, is, I'll just make a little more description. I mean, it's written there, but the parks is committed. It can only be spent on certain things. Treebank account is committed, it can only be spent on certain things. Facilities is committed, it can be only spent on certain things. And by, what that committed means is if, if for some reason the board by ordinance decided to change this, you could. I don't recommend it, but you could. Now, you get into a restricted and you, there's, this is state mandated or mandated by a law higher than ours. So you can't do anything with street aid, you can't do anything with the drug fund. Are we ready for expenditures?
Everybody good? Okay, yes.
All right, I really, I know there's a lot of stuff on this first page of expenditures, but to me, this really breaks things down. You can look at our operating expenses and this is personnel and operating for a total of 10,155,173. This is the number that I base our amount we have in our reserves, which this next year, we're supposed to have 14%. So that would be one, a little over 1.4 million dollars that we'll make sure we have July 1 going. Then we have debt service. I do have some debt service coming out of facilities as well, but this is operating debt service. And so, for our total operating expenditures, ten million, six oh six, one seventy-three. So, um, you compare that to your operating, uh, revenue, ten million, four twenty-three. It gives you, you know, we're really, really close. Uh, you know, if, if we dropped even two hundred thousand on that, it's not huge. Then, um, capital expenditures, we dropped six seventy-four, six hundred. We had nine eighty-five, two eighty-five. And what you also have to remember about this too, Commissioner McDonald, is this is a budget number, not an actual number. So, this is what we budgeted. It's our best, best laid plan. Uh, so sometimes things fall through and get pushed to another budget year or, or things just don't happen as quickly as you think they are. The bond expenditures, these, the, uh, this is, we've got a, a set amount of money set aside that we've gotta spend and this does not go against our fund balance on our, um, operating account. Parks, we're not expecting any expenditures out of there. Um, Treebank, we've got forty thousand in. Uh, this is on, per request of the, uh, Parks Director, just in case we have some expenditures, uh, we don't have to go do a budget amendment real quick to get that done. ARP, uh, this is, um, another restricted, this is a federal grant from, um, on our American Rescue Plan. Uh, then, this is our expenditures in facilities. So, that's our total expenditures for the general fund. Uh, then you add in that money of, you know, the bond and the, and the ARP, that's your difference. Or, so we're, we're over expenditures, uh, by one point one million from last year in general fund. Then, uh, street aid.
Before we move off of the, uh, operating expenditures, you mind if I ask you a question on that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Again, just looking for understanding here. In today's world, some of this, just my mind doesn't make sense. For instance, uh, we're on Department of Administration, General Fund underneath operations. Let's see, object two forty, utilities? How does utilities go down from fifty K to twenty-six K?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're on end administration?
Uh, yes, sir. Department of Administration, General Fund, Operations. I noticed on some, some utilities went up in departments, but most of them seemed to go down and it was just an odd thing to, just curious how that worked out.
Yeah, I think it's a billing thing. In, in the past, some things were billed to admin and they, and they got adjusted to go to a different department. I think the overall number is close to the same.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Did you, everyone find where I was on that?
Yes, right here.
I think you briefly mentioned the reserve fund. So, is there reserve, is there dollars going to the reserve fund this year?
Yes, we'll be, um, let me look at that number real quick.
Do you have the current balance of that account too?
I was planning on transferring over about seventy thousand dollars. This should be within seventy thousand dollars of the four point two, so, three point.
Okay.
That'd be one point, uh, three hundred and something.
One three?
Yeah. Well, closer to one four, I mean, one three five, yeah.
Okay.
So, I think, what does the code speak to going up like one percent a year where we hit twenty percent at like twenty thirty-one or something like that? Are we still on, on that pace?
Yes, yes. We're, we're supposed to be at fourteen percent as of July one. And I believe it will be twenty percent by, was that twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty-one or twenty thirty or something, yeah. Awesome.
We brought, there was some questions on the Board of Commissioners, one, two, that I was just curious about. Uh, one, probably the obvious one is the increase to the travel and training.
That is because there is a mayor's conference that should have been attended for years. All the mayors go, except for Fairview.
Where's that held?
And that's in, um, Utah in November. And we should, I have made it a point, uh, this year to spend many hours every week going to every meeting I can go to, which are free. And my time to make our community and Fairview on the map. And we, it, the benefits to being involved with all of these mayors and, uh, just learning about how they get funding and streets and, you know, just T-dot, every, everything, just a whole wide gamut of, you know, different, uh, information that needs to come to us as well, but, um, it's not being, it's not been attended and it needs to be. All, all these meetings that I've put on my schedule. So, that, that's-
I've, I've, I assumed it was probably gonna be one big event thing, but-
It's one, it's one, uh, conference for all the mayors of Williamson County and Rogers Anderson.
And then this one might just be a little petty, but I'm gonna ask.
Hold on one second. Give me, give me one second. Only reserves requirement? And I've got calculated one million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven twenty-four as of July one.
That's where we'll be. Awesome. And that, and that captures that fourteen percent or whatever?
Yes.
Awesome.
That's great news. It's a small line item, but I'm just curious. Fifteen hundred dollars for BOC uniforms. I got a, I got a polo. I mean, I'm just wondering where fifteen hundred bucks is going.
Uh, if you want, if you need, uh, um-
I'm not asking for anything. I was just curious.
I put in the budget, three hundred dollars per, per, uh, board member. If you want to use it, get with Rachel, she'll get you a-
So, that's not every, that's not used necessarily every year? It's just on there, but dumps over?
There's several of these on here that unless you choose to use it, like, um, you don't have to do training, you don't have to do community development. Uh, that's kinda there for, at your discretion.
And just like, um, if, if you've seen the shirts that I wear that are, uh, have the logo on them, when I go to every meeting I go to, I wear that same shirt. We have right down the street here, um, oh goodness, I knew I'd draw a blank. Help me with, thank you. Trina Stitchery. She's already got our logo and everything in her computer, very inexpensive. I have found, Tom's very conservative because if you go through Lands End, which is the book that has all the shirts in it, it's, I mean, it's, it's very expensive. So, what I've done, um, so that I can, um, possibly get, you know, several because I wear them throughout the week in different meetings, is, um, I've gone to like, uh, JCPenney or something like that and they have the Van Houston shirts, which I wear a man shirt because I'm broader shoulders, but they're, I mean, they're very nice shirts and they're like thirty bucks versus the seventy. So, you can kind of, you know, do a little, if, if, you know, if you wanna, uh, go through Lands End with, uh, Rachel, that's fine, but also, yeah, and, and then just get her to put the logo on. I just do that because I, I wear, I, I don't wear regular clothes to all the meetings I go to. I wear that, that mayor shirt because I like for the people to know, um, at a glance that I'm from Fairview. It's just that we, the presence in, in my mind, the presence and people knowing that we're involved is very important, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. I was just curious. Cause when I'm going through it line by line last night, I was like, fifteen hundred bucks for uniforms? That's interesting.
Well, when you, when you, uh, add that up and like I said, go through Lands End, it's, it's pretty pricey. Yeah.
Just housekeeping. May, um, Mr. McDonald maybe be on there instead of?
Do what?
Oh, the one that was printed out has my name on it.
Oh, you already fixed it?
Yeah, he fixed it. I noticed when I got here. I was gonna give you grief about it.
I had misspelled public. I don't know if y'all caught that one either, but that's, that's changed too.
I was Commissioner Street on all the line items still.
You're on top of it.
Yeah.
Uh, Rachel's, that keeps me, keeps me honest.
And you do understand the community development, right? The five thousand each commissioner gets? Okay, I just, that's, that's a, just, just for the, you know, just for the record or whatever. Uh, there are a lot of five oh one C threes in our community that, um, we each, uh, get five thousand dollars to, um, split as we choose to donate to these, um, you know, for example, Boys and Girls Club or, you know, the Historical Village or the Friends or the Library or, um, you know, school or whatever that's a nonprofit. We, we get a, you know, option to be able to donate money to those programs.
It's good with y'all. I'm just gonna wait for the next question as you head through.
I've got one if no one else does. I'm turning a couple pages though, if that's okay. I'm moving on to the Department of Planning and Codes section. This is more of just an, again, a variable that my brain can't wrap around, but-
I'm sorry, what is, what is this one, what is it under?
Uh, Department of Planning and Codes, it's probably like two pages. It's the, uh, operating account expenditure. Let's see, it's page, one, two, three, four, five, six, page seven, I believe. So, engineering services are increasing by twenty-five thousand dollars from last year. But our plan review services are decreasing and then I think we're also hiring in the planning department. So, I was just trying to make sense of why our planning spend would go down in that area, but up in engineering, when we're making hires, I was just trying to wrap my head around the, how it all connects.
The engineering services, um, this is for Griggs and Maloney.
Right.
That is in-house. They did not, they were not involved all twelve months this year, so that increase gets them that twelve months. The, the, the decrease is, um, we're hoping to have plan, some plan review done in-house.
Okay.
Uh, that's-
With what Maria's training for and all of that, okay.
Yes.
I figured it was something like that. Just wanted to get clarity. Thank you.
I wish that is gonna be a great help because, um, sending, uh, sending things out for plan review is just, um, the, the process is so slow. It's gonna be nice to have someone in-house reviewing our plans.
Mr. McDonald, just, uh, that engineering services line item, that is Kevin, Chastain, Will Owen and Curtis Broadbent, all included within that. So, planning services and engineering services all included in that.
Okay, so it's, gotcha. That makes sense. Thank you. You see at the, pretty much any department, it doesn't, doesn't matter which one, it starts off under operating with dues and subscriptions. And I noticed that some of those go up, some of those go down. What are those, it's a very small amount of money. Again, I'm asking simple, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of our budget as a whole. Just wondering what that covers, what that includes.
Uh, generally, this has been a number. I, I went through and scrubbed all the operating budgets and went back and looked at, at what we've been spending annually in those areas and if I felt like we could scrub them, I did. So, it's, um, you know, and it's, it's, uh, you know, subscriptions, a lot of times, I mean, if, if you've got a thirty-five hundred dollars in your budget and you're only doing fifteen hundred or two thousand over the last two or three years, I mean, I, I, that's, that's what I did.
Okay.
I'm excited that we have a crossing guard, but is that to make it a little more competitive that, um?
Decrease.
Oh, it is a decrease, okay.
That was one of my questions.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, I, I read it backwards.
I believe I miscalculated the, the, the prior year. This is, I believe fourteen four is more accurate.
Oh, okay. So, that's just like an adjustment to, for accuracy.
Is it safe to assume that the radio cost was, that massive decrease was just, we bought the radios last year, we don't need to buy them again this year, or is that?
Correct. I'm sorry, we're on, I'm trying to speak into the mic.
You're good.
Do we have the, the playground replacement budget that we spoke of when we bought that new playground? Are we putting, allocating any dollars for long-term repairs or replacement?
I think we did. Um, if not, that would be easy to do. Um,
And it is good that we've got park revenue creating now, but just allocating some dollars, so we don't, uh, run into that again.
Yes, I put, um, if you look into capital, we possibly use that park improvements for a forty, uh, but that may, no, that, I believe, I'll have to get with Keith on that. But I, I believe we've got a little money, but, um, that would be no problem to allocate it over. Like I said, we're getting the park revenue in and different revenue. I think it'd be, be easy to handle. I know we've got a maintenance line item in here for parks. But it, not necessarily just the playground.
It's always been, um, something that I thought was very important to add a pavilion with picnic tables by the playground so that people don't eat in the playground. They have a place to, if it rain, if it starts raining or if they're gonna have a snack or lunch or something. So, is that, is that something that?
I had talked with Keith about that and, uh, we, um, I think we need to sit down and have a, have a chat. I think there may be, may be some, some obstacles, but I think we can work something out.
And then also the sun, the sun, um,
We need to discuss that. We need to discuss that as well. I don't have anything in there in the budget for those currently. I do have, there are some funds in there for new picnic tables, but I believe they're replacing old ones. But we need to sit down and just, and then go over that. But that's, that's another thing that can be done. Even possibly bond money, it would be no issue to, to amend the budget or we could, we could add that in now if we want. If it, I think there was some, some, uh, obstacles Keith wanted to discuss with the board before we, we put it in the budget, so, um, and if he's ready to talk about it.
Yeah, I would like, I would, I would like to because those, those two things are pretty important to me.
We'll see what, what he has. If he's not prepared, we'll, we'll get together at another time.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for the whole playground, just maybe a portion where, you know, the kids mainly, you know, Yeah, and I'm not asking for the whole playground, just maybe a portion where, you know, the kids mainly, you know, a, a good, like the portion where they, where the equipment is.
Probably like the middle or something.
Yeah, because it's, it gets so hot, and I've seen this in many other, uh, playgrounds where they have the shade, they're like sails, and, uh, they work really well to keep the kids from...
I know, um, when they did the, were looking at building the playground, they, they looked at those and they said it was really expensive, but that was going with, um, that same playground company, so maybe we can look and see if there's another option out there, like, as far as playgrounds.
Yeah, because when, when I looked into them, I didn't think they were super pricey, but it might have been with that company. So, um, there's just other playgrounds that I've researched that have them, and...
And as far as the shelter, I need to contact Land Trust and make sure that we get there. So trying to come up with an a, area and what size, and... You could go from, you know, twenty by forty or something. What, what would the board like to see, uh, you know, as, as far as size?
So, the Land Trust would have a problem with a picnic cover?
I don't think they'll have a problem, but we still need to have permission to do so.
Okay. I mean, I'm not thinking of anything big. I'm thinking about something maybe that has three or four picnic, not even, not even as big as the ones we have. And I was kind of thinking, you know, um, where the playground is, uh, you know, up the field where you used to have the horseback, or the, you know, the, um, the horse shows, that area up there. Um, not up there, but that air, you know, going that direction, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Up behind the playground, that direction. There's an area that, um, people have set up to do different things, and it's kind of flat and a, a good area, just, just to get a situation where they're not eating in the...
Well, and since we put the, uh, picnic tables around the, the playground, we got people coming out there with the, their little pop-up tents and using those picnic tables to do birthday parties and stuff like that, right now. But they are kind of doing that. Um, there's, what, seven, nine picnic tables out there? I think there's seven.
Uncovered.
They're uncovered, but people are, but there are, some of them are in the shade, depending on what time of day you get there.
People are bringing tents?
Yeah, little ten by ten pop-ups.
I still...
I know.
Would like, yeah, like us to look into the, I'm not talking about something big. I'm talking about just a covered area near the playground and then the sails. That's kind of just been... Thank you.
We will try to get some numbers up on that, and that's something that we can add along the way, or if, if you may, throw a number in, I, I can make a guess, and we can adjust it later, or we can just wait for amended budget, or whatever. Whatever the board wants me to do on that.
Does anybody else have any, um, input on that? That's just something that I've always...
No, I mean, I'm in agreement. I mean, it seems like a good idea.
Just, I hear that constantly about, you know, the sails, um, and then about a covered area where if there is a pop-up storm or something, they can get, you know, go into there, maybe have a snack until it blows over, and then, and not have to leave and come back, you know, they can just...
Yeah, and just the equipment and stuff gets really warm too, and it's direct heat and the sun, kids sliding down a hundred-and-twenty-degree slide. I do have another question now regarding this part. If, are you all done with that conversation, Mayor?
Yes.
Another helped me understand what I'm looking at. Um, so on the left side of the Parks Department, towards the bottom, there is history, uh, History Village repairs of sixty-one thousand dollars on last year's budget. Was that money spent last year, sixty-one thousand dollars on Historic Village?
It will be.
So it's yet to be spent? Cause I, uh, which is fine, but I noticed in this year, under, on the next page, under the facility account expenditures, there's another line item, four-eighty-eight, History Village repairs of twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this year. So are those both going towards the same thing and just on separate line items, or what am I looking at there?
No, this, um, this is that coming out of the facility, the twenty-five thousand's coming out of the facilities account, which that's gonna be more like Triangle School Maintenance, repairs, uh, and the other one was for the parking lot.
Gotcha.
That, that, that went in, that should be finished this fiscal year.
Okay.
So they're, they're separate places. I've moved a lot of the, um, facility repairs and maintenance over into the facilities account. At some point, I mean, we can move them wherever. At some point, we can, uh, uh, maybe move that back to operating, but right now, they're holding good. Our, our facilities revenue is supporting it very well.
Thank you.
And if that could just be changed wherever through this out, throughout this document to historical, it's not history.
History, I know. I read it and I was like, well, I'm gonna just read it as written.
If I'm reading this right, Mr. Paisley's about to celebrate his twenty-fifth year anniversary. Do we have a party budgeted?
Yay, party.
We've gotta get the, the, the place set up by the playground for what we have out there.
On per, personnel salaries, we have longevity, we have step, we have cost of living, so that's it, the annual cost of living. I know I am constantly seeing things about other municipalities making adjustments. Are we still feel confident that we're competitive from our last year's discussions, and am I opening a can of worms by asking you that question?
We have not done a full-blown, uh, study. I feel like we're competitive with the folks we really want to compete with. A lot of the places that we weren't really competitive with in the first place made bigger jumps than everybody else.
Okay.
It's like those who have the gold.
Yeah.
But we're, um, I had originally had two percent. Um, I was, I didn't like where, like I said, revenues, I thought we were a little bit further ahead than we, we, they, it's coming. It's just, we haven't realized it. But I feel like this is, keeps going forward, uh, keeps, keeps, uh, the last year's increase really not only helped with the quality of employees, uh, applicants that applied, but it just, it just, the morale and just people really enjoying working for the City of Fairview is just night and day difference. Um, I would love to keep, I mean, that's the biggest asset, in my opinion, for the city, is the people who serve the community. And the higher quality and the more we can get them trained, the better we can, we can, uh, give to the citizens. I think it's a great investment. Um, I don't know if any of the, any of the, uh, department heads wanna, uh, say anything about that, but I, I feel like this is just kind of a staying steady move. Um, I think if we can go one to two percent over the, over the short-term future on COLAs, I think we'll, we'll, we'll be fairly competitive. Now, if somebody, if I misspoke, I'm more than willing to take it. But, uh, but I, I feel like after last year's increase, we're, we're in a, a pretty good shape. Thank you.
That's, that's good. That's good. I, I agree, and I wanna, wanna make sure we retain.
The Fire Chief will echo this comment. Uh, the previous two years were, were big jumps for us, and it was needed. It was, um, we had to get in the game per se. Uh, we were very low on that list of surrounding areas and, and what will be competitors of ours. And, uh, we knew there, there's some in that list that are always gonna be at the top. If you're the Brentwoods or the Franklins, where, where their, you know, their revenue is a lot larger than ours, you're gonna be at the top, and they've made some significant moves lately to really get their money up big. That's not generally what we're in competition with all the time. It's Dixon County. It's, it's these areas right around us that we're in competition with, and I think that this move, uh, keeps us consistent with that. Uh, the step raises are in there, uh, you know, if, if the boards will choose every year to, to make those steps and approve that. But I think it's imperative that we stay, uh, in tune with the cost of living, and, because what happens in these pay scales is we, we put it in, it's very satisfying. It, it serves us well, and then we forget about it for four or five years. And the next thing you know, everybody's moved past you, and now we're having to make these gigantic jumps to get back in the game. I think if, as long as we pay attention to that COLA and we move our pay scale up along those steps, then we stay competitive and we, we retain good employees. And I, I think, you know, Fire Chief, I wanna, wanna add to that.
I'm gonna echo what Tom says. Um, it's our, our biggest expense is our personnel, but we have to pay for the personnel. They're out here serving the community, and we can't provide the services without them. Um, and like Chief Humphrey said, we're not competing with Brentwood and Franklin. We know that. Our budgets do not hold, but the Nolan's Villes, uh, the Dixon Counties, uh, things like that, is who we have to stay competitive with. Um, the increase last year, not only, like Tom said, allowed us to attract some higher-quality candidates, it also solidified some of our, uh, people that have been here five to ten years to keep them here, because a lot of them could have left and made, uh, more money going somewhere else, starting all over again. Uh, but, um, with the step raises and our step plan the way it is, um, it's very attractive. Again, we have to stay, uh, in tune with the cost of living to make sure that we don't get behind again, so we don't have to make those. But, uh, I think we're, we're doing, uh, right by the employees and, and keeping them here, training them well, and, uh, they're serving the community the, the best they can.
I have a question. Are we at the top of the list with the Nolan'sville and, uh, Dixon County, so to speak?
I'm not sure about Dixon County. We passed them with our last one, but they just did a pay raise about mid-year. Is that correct?
It wasn't significant enough to catch us. They're entertaining. I had a meeting, um, yesterday. They're entertaining a ten percent, which will, will surprise us. The problem with them is they have a flat pay scale. If you're there one year or fifteen years, you make the same money. So with us, you know, seeing the order of time buys you into the city more and pertains you. So even with that ten percent, they'll file our lower pack, they'll beat us there, but over time, we'll, we still perform better.
Hold your own with them, okay.
I think as far as Nolan'sville, the last, uh, they do something a little bit different than we do. Uh, sometimes their pay raises are mid-year. Uh, they wait and see what revenue looks like, and they'll, they'll enact a pay raise in January. So I think they, uh, this past January, they came up and are right with us. They're doing a couple of different things. At least what I know in the Fire Department, they're paying, uh, additional money for AEMTs, which we require AEMT. They kind of do too, but they pay an extra, um, seventy-five dollars a month for an AEMT or something like that. It's, it's a separate line item in their, uh, pay, pay scale, but, uh, on paper, they're kind of right there with us now after they did the, their mid-year pay increase.
Thank you.
Are the, are the increases equal across the board? Um, everyone got the same type of increase? Do we do any kind of annual performance review or, um, annual meetings or reviews of independent people?
We, informally, yes. Formally, no. And we've gone back and forth with this for the last eleven years since I've been here. We did when I started, it's, it's, um, there's a lot of, there can be a lot of negative impacts because not everybody's job is the same, not, not everybody's evaluator's the same. Uh, do you have a, you get buddy evaluating, or do you have your enemy evaluating you? Do you get a raise, or, or does this one? So we, we've kind of come to the practice of if you do a good job, you get to keep your job. And, uh, if you don't, you can hit the door. And that's kind of, kind of our policy, because we're here to serve the community. It's not, I got more friends than you, or we don't want to get into a popularity political con, we want everybody to just do their job and do it well, the best of their ability. And when we need to discipline, we discipline, and if you do, you're good. But we, you know, we, we do, we do emphasize, coach your folks up, take them to the side, let them know what they can do better, let them know what's expected. Yes, we do all that. But as far as a formal A, B, C, D, E, you, you, you know, we don't have, we're not doing that. And if I've gone, we've gone over it, tried to come up with an equitable plan, and it just, I've never been able to come up to the point where the pros with our setup outweigh the cons.
And in my experience, I always just liked, um, having employees be able to have a one-on-one where they could be honest. Um, you know, speak back and forth, they could give feedback to us, um, and so what can we do to better serve them? What can we provide to better help them? Just to try and keep longevity and open communications, uh, just, I think there's some pros and cons, but I definitely see what you're saying in a smaller fitting, like us, there could be some negativity to it. I reached out to MTA's asking about reviews recently and stuff, and trying to understand, should we, do we do them? Making sure that, you know, are we setting goals? Are we hitting goals? How do you measure success? And so, trying to understand it all.
Would any department head like to address that? I believe we measure success, uh, but it's...
I was against performance evaluations. Um, we, we pride ourselves in culture. The, the culture here of providing a good workplace, management that stays in tune with our people, uh, the heartbeat of your, your staff, and whether they're performing. Um, in, in the, in the private sector, it's easier to say, well, if I'm in sales and there's a certain mark, an earmark, and that gets a commission to that, you can quantify that. In, uh, public safety, if Officer A drives down here and works a rec at the intersection, and Officer B works, drives down, or the next day works a rec at the intersection, how do you quantify the performance? They both accomplish the task. So it's tough in public safety to say, well, you're better than this person, or you're not. Um, i- it's just tougher. So we have prided ourselves in, like, from the top down, staying in tune with our officers and ensuring that they are performing to standards. And if not, we address that and bring them up to standards. And in, in Tom's comment, if they can't, then we're responsible for figuring out how, you know, we either fix that or move on from it. So that, we, we've had this debate many, many times, and it's hard. Um, uh, one of the things I said was, for police officers, it's tough to say, well, I'm gonna monetize that. Well, I have an unfair advantage. My officers can go out here and write a thousand tickets that the street department can't go do. They, they're gonna go respond to a tree in the road, but I can write a thousand tickets, so I can say, well, performance of my officers are far more than you doing that tree in the road. But then are we monetizing them going out to write tickets? So we just felt like it's just, it, it just doesn't lend to a, a good plan for the city, especially from a public safety standpoint.
That's good. I don't see reviews necessarily as competition. I see them more as a direct line of communication and opportunity for constructive criticism, um, for morale.
Right.
But it sounds like you're doing it as needed.
That we try to do in our culture, that we have an open-door policy, that we stay in tune with our people. We have conversations, we spend time with them. And, uh, I think Chief does that also, that we, we know that and know where a person's, you know, lacking, and we, we address that. So we, we've tried to address that in culture more so than a review.
That's good. We're lucky to have you guys. Thank you.
Just to add, uh, what Chief was saying about size, we're both in our departments. We, we don't have an admin building. We're working somewhere else, and our guys don't see us except when there's a major call. We're, we're there every day. We eat lunch with them. Uh, we interact. They come in our office. If they've got a problem, they, they talk to us. It usually doesn't get out of hand where we don't know about something, uh, because we're in another office or don't see them every day.
Thank you, guys.
And I do have to say, um, being involved in one way or another for, since two thousand and five, I, I can hands-down honestly say, this is the best group of fire, public safety, and, and, um, you know, city staff I've, I've ever seen. As, as a whole, the group is amazing, and, um, especially the police, I'm, tend to, I take care of my mom down the street, and, um, I'm out all hours doing different things, and they're always, um, out there working, and, you know, I mean, And, you know, I mean, I just, I always see them active and, you know, taking care of the community. And they're, they watch after us and we don't even know that they're doing it. So it's, it's very appreciative. Um, and I just, I, I can't say enough about our staff right now. I'm, I'm very, you know, impressed with everyone we have on board. As far as the COLA, what, what is the, what is it for this year? The percentage?
One percent. One percent. I thought it was a fair ask.
I... Is one percent really, um, a, a good cost of living?
Probably. I, I feel like revenue supports it. I feel like, um, I feel like we may, down the road, ask for two or three. But, um, I would normally try to average about two percent, one and a half, two percent, uh, to stay in the game. Uh, I think one percent keeps us steady. Um, you know, I, I've, on the revenue side, I don't wanna cut anything else in my budget, in our budget, to get that one percent. Uh, I feel like revenue would hold another one percent, but I can't show it. And so that's not, that's why it's not in there.
I mean, does one percent really amount to anything?
When you say one percent, what are you basing one percent off of? One, one percent of?
Like, I guess, am I not asking it correctly? I, I guess I'm just asking like what, uh, the cost of living raise for each employee is for this year.
Well, hold on. I should've had this number. In fact, I was told I needed to have this number and I didn't have it. Um... My computer keeps cutting off. Um, if you look at, now this doesn't account the increase in taxes and, and, and retirement. Um, but this, if you look on...
Total, total personnel.
No, it would, um, uh, the one percent would be based on the salary number.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the overall, um, percentage of increase across the board.
Like the report we have, the majority of the personnel's salaries are going up four percent or more. So I'm trying to understand what one percent is.
Yeah, that's, that's me too.
All right. I can give you real quick the salaries. Now, I would have to go back and enter those new salaries into everybody's budget to give you that. It'd take me a minute.
I don't, I don't think that, I think what I'm asking is, is there like a cost of living across the board raise? That...
Yeah, it's one percent. Are you asking what would that, how much does that one percent equate to?
No, I'm just asking if one percent is typical because it, that, it, it, to me, that ju... One percent seems like it, it doesn't even make a difference as far as the cost of living.
Um...
You're talking about one percent of salary? Is that what you're... But the report we have in front of me, almost everyone is four percent or more.
Yeah, they get a, most people have three, it's one percent COLA, then if they take a step, that's another three, three percent.
Okay.
So most, yeah.
Okay.
And so, you know, that very first, like I say, if I was starting work today, that very first number, everybody's will slide one percent. So that starting number, if, in your department, goes up one percent from what, what your, was the previous year. So everybody's salaries are up one percent. And then if you go to another step, you get another three percent. Does that make sense?
I know what you're asking.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know you, I know you, I know you know what I'm asking because I have a number, I have a number, I have a number in my head.
Right. If you'll just refer to our pay scale, all the grades, each one of those steps that you go up is a three percent increase to reach 15 years. So that's what, as we come with the budget every year, we're asking for a step raise. That's generally the baseline budget for an increase. So every employee would get a three percent step that year. They would move to the next step on their grade. So what we, when we set this last year, this, this eighteen percent, we were asking fifteen, y'all graciously give us eighteen. It was moving forward with a plan to look at the cost of living each year. And if the cost of living was five percent overall in the nation, we would get our step and then we would offset that by two percent COLA raise to make that five percent.
Thank you. That's exactly, that's what I was wondering.
So what he did this year, we were asking for one, and what he'll do is he'll enter that into that spreadsheet. That whole spreadsheet will increase by one percent and then the employee will get their step. So they're getting, so ultimately they're getting a three percent, I mean, a four percent raise total. But you're adjusting our pay scale by one percent for a cost of living.
Does everyone increase a step?
I, I think everyone on the, the pay scale's been asked that they...
I, I'm only a very few. I, I, I just increased by COLA and, um...
So the increase by COLA automatically increases by step as well?
Everything does, yes.
The COLA is by your decision to increase our pay scale. That's granting us an adjustment in cost of living and it moves our pay scale up. What we ask for every year is a step raise. In that, that plan of 15 years of working here, you, you move up your steps in your position. So that's three percent annually, and then we would, uh, offset that with a COLA increase. If, if the cost of living was just three percent for the year, then we would just ask for the step.
Okay, it would be the step.
It would just the step. If it was more than that, we're asking each year that we offset that a little bit. So our pay scale climbs to meet the current inflation and cost of living and things like that.
That's what I was wondering because the, the step is one thing, but then to...
Yes, the step's a, a plan. The step is the plan, which is your 15-year pay plan. That's our plan.
Okay.
And then we, we asked last year to take into consideration each year that the cost of living is gonna go up more than our plan. And we do that, we will ask for that in addition in a COLA adjustment, and that would move our pay scale up and it'd keep our pay scale current. So we're not shelving it. And then five years later, we realize we're 21% behind everybody else around us and we're having to make this gigantic leap to get back in the game.
That's what I was wanting to make sure of, is that we were adjusting the COLA to account for the actual overall...
Yes. So when you see yearly, the percentage, three percent will be your base step, and then anything we're asking over in COLA will be the additional percentage on that.
There's one other area where, where somebody might not get a step. If somebody has been in the same grade their entire career and they've gotten to the fifteenth step, then they only get the COLA. So like, say, if you've got somebody's been...
Because they're kinda like topped out or something?
Yeah, they're topped out. So that's, I believe we have, might have one other, uh, situation like that on the, in the...
There are a couple of random ones that were negative. I assume it was where we had a budgeted position, filled it, and that's where they, they started on their current step or whatever.
Yes, most of that's where there were, a higher-salried employee is being replaced by a lesser-salried employee.
Thank you, sir.
Um, yeah. That is ninety-eight percent of them probably. Yes, I don't see, nothing jumps out at me that any different than that.
Okay.
Rachel, would this document, um, could, like, could it be numbered? Like, have a...
That was my bad. I can, I can definitely do that. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I just, I just feel like when we're, as we're going through and we're talking about it, we can say page whatever. Um, just numbered and then historical changed. That's just a little housekeeping there.
I like this format. I, I don't know that we've ever done it this way. Um, and, you know, I, I definitely can get, um, get numbers on the pages. That's, that's not a big problem.
Yeah, and I mean, I was just saying, Rachel, cause I figured you might've printed the document. I don't, it either, whoever. It's just, as we go through it, it's just quicker for us to flip to page seventeen or whatever. Yeah.
There are a lot of, uh, exciting things coming up and, and we, we just really appreciate the board's support over, over the last, um, couple of budget cycles. And, um, we're, the next four or five years are gonna be a lot of fun. And we just, we just appreciate, uh, all your support. And, and the budget is gonna be critical. Uh, that we, you know, you look at the budget and that, it'll shift a little bit on, you know, as we're trying to focus on certain things. But for the most part, I think we've set a, set a foundation to just really be able to provide exceptional service to the city. Um, in fact, a service that I don't think the city's ever seen. So, uh, we're, we're excited.
I, just a comment, I, I assume you're kinda looking, um, forward, thinking of debt service for fire station. And we talked about the fire truck recently, how you're kinda preparing for that. So you're kinda monitoring and watching that and adjusting and planning as we know those are coming?
Yes, I've got, I've got, uh, some more work to do on the, on the funding of the, of the fire station and police and court facilities. But we're, if we did it today, we're, we're with, under our, uh, uh, we would, if the numbers came in like I think they're going to, we would be under our, uh, debt management policy, uh, uh, maximum. Um, I think, you know, we, I think we could get a thirty to forty-year facilities for pennies on the dollar compared to even the bond market going, uh, USDA route. So there's, there's a lot of things we're looking at, take advantage of our rural, um, uh, the status right now, uh, which we won't have forever.
That's right.
And, uh, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of things going forward. Uh, we're making investments in economic development. We're gonna continue to make investments in planning. Uh, so much of this is, I just, I just see, I just see bright days down the road.
I have asked all my questions, so don't wait on me.
No, I'm just giving everybody time to make sure that they've been able to, um, have the opportunity to ask any question.
I als... I also finished, uh, my questions. Thank you for putting this together so easily for us to understand, kinda trying our best. And thank you for everybody coming today and answering questions. So if, I don't know if there's any questions out there that wanna be asked. I know Ms. Trolle's always got something for us.
It would be great, uh, to have, it doesn't affect the budget per se, but just as a taxpayer, so we can see total revenue, total expenditures, including, you know, bond repayments, et cetera, in the bottom line. I mean, I've listened, we, we don't have those sheets that you guys have, uh, whether that would be clear enough for me. But just to see four or five lines, here's how much we're taking in total, here's how much we're spending total, and here's how much we're in debt at the end of the year, or how much we're to the plus, okay, including all expenditures. And then what the reserve is. That's all. Just, just for a, a, a very clear understanding, that's all.
Noted.
No, I think that would be good. I think Franklin does a fancy chart, makes it very easy to read, you know, the colored charts or whatever. Something like that would be cool to post on our, on our website.
I didn't have time to look this up, so I'm just asking, with the new, uh, permits, we're supposed to get a percentage on certain permits for the park. What is that percentage? No, okay, and I, I didn't go through anything. Yeah, okay. And the other thing is, um, when we apply to the...
Talk in the mic for me.
Oh, gosh, okay.
That's okay.
When we apply for the, um, Arbor Day Foundation, one of the criteria for Tree City USA is two dollars per capita, um, expenditures, uh, throughout the year. Do we ha- have that in the budget someplace?
We do have a line item for, uh, trees for forty thousand or something like that. It was like a tree bank, I think. So that could probably account for that, I'd say.
Yeah, that. And we also have, um, I think eight to ten thousand in tree work in the budget. So we, I think we account for, in a couple of places.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank all the hard work that y'all go through, cause I've sat through them and I know what, what it is to, to get to, get to the bottom line. Uh, I'll mention something a minute ago. Thank you for that, Mr. Trolle, about, uh, expenditures as far as capital projects. Where do we stand on the repayment of City Hall?
The re... payment?
Yeah. What, what do we still owe on City Hall?
Um, I'm not totally sure, but it'll be paid off in 2030.
Got about six years in. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that, and Ethan may have found it, but I think it was like fifteen or twenty cents of the permit goes towards, uh, parks. We increased our fee to a dollar eighty-five, I think. And so fifteen or twenty cents of each permit goes to the parks. And he had a revenue number at a recent meeting for us. I think it was already this year was like thirty grand or something already. Remember that number?
I'd have to verify that with Tom.
Yeah, no, that's good.
When it was raised to a dollar eighty-five, it was sixteen percent of that goes to the Parks and Recreation Fund, which is twenty-nine point six cents out of every...
Thank you, sir.
...square foot.
I, I assume that nobody's talking about changing the tax rate? I mean, that's staying at eight, seven, six, five dollars a point.
Yeah, we, we do not request any changes in the tax rate.
No change in tax rate. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so, um, this will, I guess the first reading of the budget will be on the sixteenth, um, agenda. And then, um... Yeah, the final, let's see. The final is the twentieth of June. June sixth? June sixth. When you said the second, I thought you meant the second, second meeting. So, okay, so our first reading of the budget is, um, May sixteenth. And our second and final reading of the budget is, um, June sixth. And if that's all the questions, I appreciate everybody coming out today and, uh, those at home who are watching, um, we will adjourn.